There you go.
We got this call. We're good. Do I have a motion to approve the agenda amendments dated December 13th? Motion by class, second by Casey?
Yes, sir.
Any discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Opposed, yeah. Any public discussion, I'm sorry. I can't see the guy back there.
Dave, please try to... Light one through your booth.
Okay. About the claims, has everybody had a chance to review the claims? Motion by class to approve, second by law.
Sure.
Any discussion? Hearing none.
Civil defense, how come we can't put our own tracks on? I guess if they hire Doug's, one of Doug's guys, they have to pay the engineers off or something like that. Civil defense.
I got two good questions for Chris.
Then why are, if we got them conservation people, why didn't we hire a moment now? I don't quite understand that. Don't they have guys that work there?
Yeah. That's a good question for the conservation board. Yep.
I have a few questions here from the board. But Tammy, she entered lunch the other day because it was like 10 bucks a month for, it wasn't 20 bucks, 20 bucks a month for 10 months because they're all paid on their 20 other phones.
Yeah.
I told you it wasn't per month because that's a little steep. I don't know, maybe that's something we should maybe do a self-funding policy, just visit every department different. I mean, it should be the same.
Do you want to make a note, put that on the agenda for next week?
No, I mean, I can do that first year right here.
Putting it on after the first year.
So probably should be probably... Doug pays us 15 and these, they get paid 20 and... Should be some consistency, I think, in that.
And do you want to note on the mowing while that's the conservation?
Well, don't they, well, they're all there.
Yeah. We'll put it on the agenda for next year. Maybe have the board come in and meet with us about their asking for conservation department. That would be the time to talk to Kendall about some of the issues.
Well, you guys will have to do it when we get on.
Yeah, but that would be the right time to talk to Kendall. So either we'll make a note of it or one of us will remember.
And then like Tom Brust and Steve Young, they had some dollar signs behind their names, but no reason. So I asked Tammy, she had to look it up and it was for mileage. Well, they put mileage down, so there's no questions asked.
They should, they should have the miles plus the rate.
It said 15210 for Tom Brust, I don't know, nothing behind it.
We have to put down the miles times the rate and that's what the state demands, so they're going to have to do it.
That's all I have.
Okay. Any other questions on the claim? All those in favor of approving the claims, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried.
Did they take your demo yet? No. There's two of them. Yeah, top of the list. She gave you Beaver out of that.
I heard Dana.
Yeah, we're ready for the veterans there.
Okay. November was pretty busy. Once for me, I had 53 calls, 83 messages, 35 walk-ins. We did transport one veteran and we did two military funeral honors that month. Was out of the office for a couple of days. Currently, my records count stands at 1108, so I'm getting a little closer to my target. Currently, I've got 38 VA claims open, seven that are pending development, and nine that are ready for decision. It's slowly trickling in, getting about one or two approvals or completions per week from VA just due to the PAT Act and some of the backlog. Continuing to work on my budget for 2023. We have your work up to 29, even though I'm taking vacation over that time period and need to work on that day. I did submit an executive summary to VetPro on the evaluation of their software program. They thought it was very comprehensive. They were going to pass that along to their CEO on some of the recommendations that I had for the program at the user level, and so I'm waiting to hear back on that as to what they're going to consider implementing or inculcate into this next software upgrade. Continuing to work with Mr. Jim Mori on the estimate for cost to scan gray books four and five. I have books one, two, and three done. They are digitized on the server and preserved should something happen to the hard copy of the gray books. Those are preserved, so more to follow on that. I did update the commissioner's table, meaning when they started, how long they served, and I will provide an info copy to you all on that so that you have visibility with that. And then I emailed out a memorandum for our meetings, the commissioner meetings for 2023. Didn't know if you guys had received that or... We, nothing's really changed. We still plan on meeting the second Thursday of every month at 4:45 with some exceptions due to school conflicts that are noted in the memo, so... Currently working on some train up for VA Vet Life Insurance. That's going to take effect on January 1st, so I'm trying to read up on that program because I do have some vets that have been asking about enrollment for that. Continuing to work on the VA PAT Act claims that are recently taking place. Getting inundated with a lot of conditions that are now recognized and approved by the VA. So the word is out and vets are coming in to take a look at that and ask about those things. And then one of my do-outs to you is the metrics for the end of the calendar year, where I'm at with my office, what are some of the bigger key items that have been accomplished. So I'm working to get that taken care of. And then I'll work on the public service announcement, but I'll be taking vacation from the 22nd or the 2nd of January, so I won't be open those days. Subject to your questions, that's all I have, gentlemen. Okay, thank you very much.
Thank you, Dan.
You're welcome.
Next thing on your agenda is... We'll do that, no, wait a minute. We have a decision to approve the liquor license for bottom of the cup, LLC, Brittany?
That one is on hold. I'm working with Doug. When she gets her zoning stuff done properly, then we can move forward with that, that one.
So right now, it's going to be on hold for today? Okay. The next one is approved liquor license for pit stop pumpkin grill.
That's just a renewal.
That's a renewal?
Yep.
That's the...
Going over section.
Section. Guys, need to approve the pit stop pumpkin grill.
Okay. I'll second your motion, Dan. Are there any discussion on it? Hearing none. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried unanimously.
And we're calling Cory Tilson from Wellmark. He is the Medicare Specialist. Last week, I briefly briefed you on the options for just a Medicare seminar for staff, but there's the Employee Group Benefit Medicare Plan that you would have to approve. So I think it would be best if Cory explains it. I know enough to be dangerous, quite honestly.
Dangerous, good.
Yeah, I'm not sure I want to...
I just want Cory.
Yes, Cory, this is the Cassup County Board Supervisor. So we have Donna Nielsen and Doug Miller here and board members and our auditor.
I'm terrific. Good morning. How's everyone?
Good.
I think Cory is, Cory, I just had indicated that we had met last week that we are looking at options for possibly a training for staff to give a seminar with more information and that you would maybe go over what the board would need to do if they wish to pursue a group Medicare plan.
Yes, yes, absolutely. Happy to do that. Can everyone hear me okay?
Yes.
Okay. Great. So yeah, I checked on, I had met with Donna and Doug last week and really we talked about a couple of different things. We talked about essentially a group retiree program, which I can give some detail on. And then we also talked about trying to set up some employee retire, I guess, retiree or employee Medicare meeting. That would be more educational, so I'll just kind of briefly cover both. And then certainly if there's any question, let me know, stop me, and we'll hit those. But the employee, employee group retiree program, we talked about it as essentially a way that new county could offer a retiree's benefit to any retirees from the county at essentially no cost, at no cost to the group and pretty limited administrative burden. The real benefit to that program is that you can offer Medicare supplement, local life plan that mirrors the old plan app that used to be on the individual market and is no longer available. So this would be a way for the county to essentially offer that program app benefit to retirees of the county without having to contribute anything financially and is really honestly just a value add for employees and also folks who are looking to retire. Some detail on that plan. We, we work directly with the members. It is up for the group, whether or not they want, you want to contribute or not to that. I would tell you, most of the groups that we work with on this together program don't pay anything in terms of premium for the members. And if that is the case, we work directly with the members upon enrollment. So we would essentially get folks enrolled, then we bill them directly for premium and essentially work with them on knowing. There is some list on Donna, or would be some list on Donna and Doug then, just in providing information for that program and packets to employees as they are retiring. But once we actually get folks on the plan, it's basically a hands-off deal throughout for the county. As far as pricing on that goes, that program, because it is a group product instead of an individual product, it is a little bit more expensive than what you see out on the individual market. So without being able to kind of see to the audience and understand if anybody maybe is familiar with Medicare or more familiar, when you look for Medicare supplement policy individually, like if you went to your, your local Wellmark agent and were looking for Medicare supplement policy at 65, those plans are going to be age rated. So as you continue to get older, those plans get more expensive. With the medic, with the employee group retiree program that you would offer, those rates are annually adjusted, but they adjust about 2% or 3% every year. And that becomes, while it is more expensive initially, so if you're age 65, looking to enroll, that is going to be more expensive than what you can buy individually on the market. Once you get to be about 70, 71, that employee group retiree product actually gets cheaper than what you can buy on your own out in the market. So there's, there's a lot of benefits to that program. And certainly if there's any question on that, I can, I can answer those before I kind of talk through why we, we also were talking about some employee meetings that kind of supplement that employee group retiree program.
That only applies to part C?
No, so the, the employee group retiree program wouldn't be part C. You would need to be enrolled in part A and B, I'm excusing, in order to take the EGRP, we call that for short, and then you would need a part B plan. So because it's a Medicare supplement type policy, that part D is not included. Part C is going to be med, med advantage. Are there any, any other questions on kind of what that, that program looks like? Why would it, or why, why would that be a good thing for, for employees to have or retirees to have an option?
I don't see any other questions.
Okay. So certainly there are, as we continue, just let me know. But the reason that we also talked about doing some employee meetings is that along with that EGRP and with kind of the nuance there regarding the rate and kind of how that gets to be a more, you know, cost-effective option as you, you get a couple of years out of retirement, we also see real value, you know, in working with other counties, other school districts and other groups here at Wellmark with providing employee educational type of meeting along with offering an EGRP. And the reason for that is really, I would say, like threefold. One, it allows us to get a chance to kind of provide that education on the EGRP product specifically. So rather than putting that on Donna and Doug, we can come out, we can talk about some of the benefits, what that product is, we can also make sure they understand, you know, that they also need to be enrolled in part B and part A and part B. So we handle some of that education for employees that might be considering it. Secondly, we also see often times that when it comes to retirement and folks kind of get close to age 65 or over 65, a lot of times we see that in working with groups, that sometimes we're, employees are hesitant to retire just because they maybe don't have all the information or they don't know where to get all the information surrounding Medicare and all the, you know, the alphabet too, all the part, part A, part B, all of that. So getting out in front of employees and being able to kind of walk through that, explain what those different parts are, explain kind of when you need to enroll, when are you eligible, and kind of try and take some of that mystery off around Medicare way for employees can sometimes help them reach that point where maybe they are ready to look at retirement. So we also see that as a, as a big value. And then certainly it's just a good way for us to kind of get in front of people who maybe have questions that again, don't know where to go to. So if we were to look at doing some employee meetings, and the reason that we propose that is not at all to, you know, it's not a sales presentation, we're not, we certainly can enroll people if, you know, they're looking to enroll or maybe it's that time. But really, we would be coming out and we'd do that, you know, at no cost to the group to essentially provide some additional education for the employees. Give them a person to, to talk to if they do have questions or maybe aren't sure about parts of Medicare, kind of what they need to do. And then also help support and kind of launch that, that group retiree product that you, you could potentially be offering to those employees. And then ideally, kind of what we see with other groups is that we almost do that on an annual basis because every year you may have, or maybe a semi, or by annual, I guess, every, every year or two come back and kind of do that again, just because you, you will have people continuing to kind of hit that point where they're looking at Medicare and considering their options. And it's a good way to continue to provide that education to, to employees that when they are ready to make that decision to retire, they have all the information they need and have somebody that they can ask any questions that they might have to. That's kind of why we recommend supplementing the EGRP with some employee meetings just to provide that additional support and education. Any questions on kind of the conversation that Donna and Doug and I had last week?
The group plan, that would include everybody in Iowa in that group?
Yeah, so that group plan, you can actually offer that to anybody nationwide. You know, as far as the eligibility, that would be, that's up somewhat to the group. As far as who can enroll into it, they do need to be retired and off of the group plan. So it is, it's not a way to kind of move folks off of the county active plan and onto a retiring solution, but if they're actively retiring and going to be dropping off of a group plan, they can take that EGRP once they, once they are retired and off of your group plan.
That, that...
It is available to anybody.
That includes spouses?
Correct, yes, that does include spouses. And specifically to your question, yes, anybody in Iowa can take that. But if you have folks who are retired, are retiring and moving to Florida or Arizona, which sounds pretty darn, pretty darn good this morning as I was running kids into daycare. It's awfully cold down here, but if you've got folks that are doing that, this program has a network to go Medicare supplement plan, which means that anybody nationwide that accepts Medicare will accept this program. So you can also offer it to folks that are moving out of state, that live out of state, all those things. As long as they've been, you know, as long as they are, have been a Cassup County employee and kind of meet the eligibility requirement, you know, that you have to set for that, they would be eligible. So on the prescription drug side, Wellmark does have the plan. We don't have a group option that I would necessarily recommend to Cassup unless... We have group part D options, but they, they are more expensive and they almost, almost always require the group to contribute to them, to make them a, you know, financially viable option for an employee. But we do have individual part D plans, which we can talk to in those educational seminars. But employees can also, you know, obviously we love if they stay with Wellmark to get that part D, but if they find a better option that fits them, fits them better to Cigna or UHD, they can ask part D really during any period that they want.
My last question, does it affect the metrics on our self-funding group plan?
Not directly, no. So again, this is going to be just retiree. So if you have somebody who, if you have somebody who's 66 and is retiring, they would be able to take that, they would then drop off of the group plan. So indirectly it could, if folks retired and decided to take the EGRP. But as far as rating impacts to the self-funded plan, it's not going to impact that one way or another unless you actually have folks that choose to retire and move to this plan.
Now, you did say though that there could be some administrative costs to the county?
No, no administrative cost. There is some administrative involvement just from, from the theme. I would assume that would be Donna and Doug in the sense that we will provide them with packets that include information on this program, include an application, kind of just some highlights and really the, the thought there is that they would then provide that to employees. So the administrative involvement with strictly on there going to be involved or isolated to essentially providing the information to employees when they do choose to retire. But as far as costs, there are no costs in the group, no administrative costs at all to offering this to employees.
Anybody else have any questions?
Is there anything else that you think we should cover that maybe I didn't cover, talk about last week?
The only thing I can think of, Cory, is that the board would actually need to approve going forward with the group plan in order for a binder to be prepared, and that takes about, did you say 45 days?
Okay, the, the approval, sorry, just want to make sure I understand. The approval or the binder process takes 45 days?
Well, the...
I know our binder process takes 45 days, I guess I'm just asking if the approval also takes 45 days.
But the board actually has to act on that. The, the regular Medicare seminar could just be offered, but if you, we wish to go towards the group plan, the board has to act on that.
Gotcha, gotcha.
Anything else, Doug? I have no question. I would ask for a motion to approve the group Medicare options for Cassup County employees. I have a motion by Casey, you have a second? I'll second it. Any more discussion?
Well, I know people that have Medicare supplements and they're nowhere near with this cost. And they have, the only difference is that they're UK some deductible. We have a serve program, you can't handle it, most people go through, but if you were on a scripted one, don't you? I don't, I don't necessarily see a lot of benefit to this. You know, have more meetings and I guess I'm not really, I'm not sold on the whole idea, but yeah. But that's just my opinion.
Could, could I say something on there? Just so you know, I, I am a ship counselor for Cassup County and have been trained through the Iowa Insurance Division as a volunteer. Do not get paid for the work that we do. We work with Medicare-aged people in helping them get Medicare information and sharing the process. We do not enroll anybody in a supplemental plan. Those have to be done by a licensed agent, okay? We do help people with the part D, the drug plan part, we can do that. I would just say from my point of view, when you are 65 and you enroll in a part B supplement with, which is what this gentleman... enroll in a part B supplement with, which is what this gentleman was talking about, the, the costs for those plans are going to be fairly low. I don't know what kind of cost they're looking at here. But the costs of a supplement increase each year. And by the time you reach age 70, um, what maybe started out at $135 a month may now be $200 a month. And that will keep accruing because they're, uh, age-related, age-approved. So as you get older, they're going to increase. So when he's talking about the initial cost maybe being a little higher, but by the time you reach age 70, it's maybe going to level out, that could be a good thing, uh, for a retiree if that's there. I know at, at our house, um, there's discrepancy in age by three years. David's is, um, I want to say about $40 a month more than mine because of his age. So, you know, it would be something that you'd want to look at, but, um, you know, go from there. The, the drug plan part, um, would be separate from that, as he said, and those like this year, um, for 2023, there are 24 different drug plans for eligible people, and you find one that's lowest cost for them. And it may or not, may not be Blue Cross Blue Shield, you know, but that's okay. But the plan F that they're talking about is the Cadillac Plan. Medicare pays, F pays, there's no deductible, anything very seldom would you ever get a bill. Um, you know, I wouldn't say never, but it's, you know, if you did get one, it'd probably be pretty low cost, whatever it might be. But...
Yeah. And I would add that, that the F that we're talking about is also, I probably mentioned this, but I can't remember exactly, the F that I mentioned is no longer available to anybody who is becoming eligible for Medicare after January 1st of 2020. So if you had somebody who retired and turns 65 tomorrow, they will, if they wanted a program F or a plan F, uh, they would no longer be able to get that on their own individually. That would only be available through something like this employee group retiree program.
And the other thing is, this would be employee choice. They still could look at, they would not be obligated to go towards the group plan if they could like choose to have a cheaper plan at 65, correct?
Correct. And, yep. And that was the other thing I was going to mention, I think, Donna, um, is that, that is why we highly recommend doing some employee sessions as well, uh, just to give them some of those other options. Cause I can tell you from my experience in kind of working with its products, as well as our other individual Medicare products, you're probably not going to get the majority of people that want to take the program F just because of that additional cost. Um, you know, we can talk about the value, uh, of kind of having that more consistent rate and not kind of being on that age-rated track, but ultimately we understand that most people may look at that and say that, that's maybe more than I want to pay, even though, you know, in five or six years, that might be a, a cheaper option. Uh, so that's why we also want to just make sure that employees also have the information on some of those other products, like what is Metavantage, uh, what, what are the other Medicare supplement options? So that, for the, you know, that other bucket of people that maybe don't want the plan F and the cost there, that they know what they've got available to them and they know that they've got some other options.
Any other questions? Hearing none. Do a roll call, please.
Casey?
Yes.
Lot?
Yes.
Lot?
Yes.
Church?
Yes. Thanks, Corey.
Thanks so much. Have a great day. Appreciate your time.
We're going to jump over to items on the agenda and go to discussion, decision. Our mic lag ornament. We'll have to get a manager and get, get Brittany on the phone. Brother on there?
Welcome to AT&amp;T's teleconference service. Please enter your access code, followed by the pound sign. Join the conference as the host, press star, otherwise press pound. Please enter your host password, followed by the pound sign. There are two participants on the call, including you. You are joining your conference as the host. For a menu of available commands, press star pound.
Morning, Tim.
Hello?
Hi.
How are you? Oh, how are you doing here?
Oh, yeah, this is the Kusut County Board of Supervisors.
Well, Tim, I have my colleague, Elizabeth Burnett, with me this morning.
Thank you for being here this morning.
Do you have any questions for us?
I, I guess I, I wondered how we should use our time this morning. Um, I wonder, do you want me to address any particular questions with the ordinance or with the state process, or do you have questions about the draft that I sent over? Um, I really want to use our time less effectively by talking about what you want to talk about.
The draft is long, so I don't know, anybody in the audience, have you read it?
Not yet.
Do you have any objections on it?
Would it be helpful if I just summarized it?
Right. Why don't you quickly do that?
Okay. Um, does everyone in the room at least have a copy or have a few that you can look at together?
I can make copies quick.
We'll make some copies and hand you out. By the way, we got them on our iPass, that's, that's the only thing we have right now.
Oh, that'll work. That'll work. As I'm talking, I just wondered if I, as I'm talking, if you're able to look at what I'm describing, um, it'd be kind of helpful. Um, the, the first thing I'd like to mention is, you know, this is a zoning ordinance. And so it, it needs to comply with your comprehensive plan. And so, um, I was sent a copy of your comprehensive plan, which is, is a little bit dated in the sense it's from 1973. And, you know, it could, it could use some updating in terms of population trends and projections. But I also think it's a really good comprehensive plan. It covers, um, a lot of really important topics, plays out in my law ordinance, or it helps with implementation, describes everything really well. Um, and so, you know, what any county that wants to use the zoning powers of the county to direct pipelines, you need to start by rolling up their sleeves and looking at their comprehensive plan. And each county has its own comprehensive plan that'll be a little different. And it should describe your current land use and it should describe your goals for future land. And so, um, I've reviewed your comprehensive plan and it has all of, all the little features in it. And what I, what I did was really tried to, to look through that and pull out and find clear statements of your county's goals, uh, for land use in the county and incorporate those, uh, into the ordinance. Um, so the, the beginning part is what's called the, the recitals or the, it's kind of like legislative findings. At the Board of Supervisors, you're doing the legislative findings here and, you know, you are, for anybody that's reading the ordinance, are trying to comply with it. Here in the first page of the, of the draft, we're identifying your legal authority to do this, uh, which includes the Iowa Constitution, Home Rule provisions, which includes chapter 335, which is the county zoning chapter. Um, and it identifies that you've got a current zoning ordinance in place as well as comprehensive plan in place. Um, and then you have this kind of long barrier act in the middle with numbered, um, with numbered provisions. Those are actual quotations from the comprehensive plan that they put together back in the 70s. Uh, but I think it, it's, these are still good statements about why you've adopted those regulations and what its purposes are. And we want to do that because the, the draft ordinance that Shelby County kind of started with, but the other counties are looking at, um, it's a framework and there are certain things in it that could be changed from county to county, especially based on, you know, the particular land use or the particular land use goals of, of the county as expressed in the comprehensive plan. So you can, um, you can see some differences, um, in, in Kusut County from other counties and the ordinance reflect that, or it can. And so we want to identify what those are. And so this'll, this is one of the reasons that it's long, but we're just identifying how the counties prioritize the land use so that we can get to the pipeline ordinance later in the ordinance. Um, you, you can see how the pipeline ordinance implements the goals that the county has had since 1973, right? Um, another thing that the, that the ordinance has is some provisions that require pipeline companies to turn over information to the county related to emergency management, hazard mitigation. So we want to try to find if we can, based on the comprehensive plan related to that, um, that's important both for safety of people and response to, to emergencies that we develop or hazards of various types. You want to identify what kind of uses people are doing in your county of lands and structures that may be dangerous to others. Um, that's certainly both related to zoning and related to your obligations under Iowa Code Section 479D to do emergency planning together with the cities and the counties and with the state agency, to coordinate that. So we, we want to identify all of that, describe the obligations you have to do emergency management, give us, then support the parts of the ordinance that are requesting that information because it will help your emergency management administrators respond to an incident if there is one. The second page kind of has a lot of that in it. Um, we're talking about the police and firefighters and we're talking about emergency management, planning and authority. Um, we are identifying later in the second page, the basic jurisdictional framework that exists for regulating pipeline. Um, one of, one of the tricky parts about the ordinance that you are trying to develop here, is you want to avoid on the one hand, the jurisdiction that the federal government has over safety standards. And you also want to avoid the jurisdiction that the Iowa Utilities Board has over the determination of public conveniences and necessity and the ranking of them to domain. You know, there are, the, the pipeline companies will tell you that you can't adopt this ordinance because either the federal government and the safety standard jurisdiction or the state government and this state level permit or both just simply preclude you from adopting an ordinance. Not the question that other states have confronted and the, and the federal courts have upheld, governing, governing of ordinances adopted by cities and counties as applied to hazardous liquid pipelines. But the, the Iowa courts and the court of the eighth circuit, which is the federal circuit that we're in, haven't directly addressed that question. So as you, as you think about adopting ordinance, I mean, you need to be aware that they're likely to be challenged by the pipeline companies who, who think that, or who want these ordinances to be preempted because they, they don't want to have to comply with, for example, 99 different sets of regulations in Iowa, which is what, if, if our zoning ordinances are upheld, you know, they would potentially have different setbacks, for example, in each county if they want to construct a project. And so there's lots of reasons for them to fight as hard as they can, you know, to overturn the test of the zone. So we have to be careful then in developing it to identify what the federal jurisdiction is under the Pipeline Safety Act, um, and what the state, what, what they do and shouldn't be doing. There are two things in the Federal Pipeline Act that Congress says that are important with regard to setbacks. Congress said that a pipeline has its materials, safety organization or agency, which everyone simply refers to as CINSA in this context, which is a part of the Department of Transportation. They set administrative regulations for the design, the construction, the operation and the maintenance of the pipeline itself. How big the diameter can be, how often they have to be a regulator or pumping station, how thick the walls of the pipe are, how constructed and how they're operated after it's constructed. So your zoning ordinance really has to avoid doing that or it will be preempted by federal law. But the second thing Congress said is that the Department of Transportation has no authority to determine deciding when the routing of a pipeline, which means the federal government doesn't get to tell you where in your county it should go, or where in your state it should go at least. Uh, that's the job of the state government. And in Iowa, the state government has adopted both, section 479D, the state administrator, or the Iowa Utilities Board administrator, and has a process for at the state level and it's adopted with the zoning powers that county has. And so together, the state and the local government should be able to determine where the pipelines go in relation to existing uses, existing property owners. Um, and, and the federal government can't interfere with that process is what Congress has said. And so we're identifying that, you know, in the middle of the second page here. We talked more about that jurisdiction purpose there. On the third page, we've identified the state laws that apply. So Iowa Code Section 479D 2.4 requires the pipeline companies to file petitions. And so we're, we're identifying other applicable laws so that if someone's challenged, everyone knows that they cannot not to, you know, interfere with either the state or the federal process. So we're just identifying what those other applicable laws are. Then further down on the third page, we get into the specific, um, summit pipelines and navigator project, um, both of which are going through Kusut County. Um, so this is what you might just call a statement of the fact, you know, what's going on in the background of your document. And at the moment, they have not begun construction in the county partly because they're not beginning construction until they complete their process with the Iowa Utilities Board, which has applied and is in petition at this point. But they have not been held a hearing or a proceeding or schedule. And there's much to be done in the Utilities Board in terms of people arguing about whether they should be granted these permits. And on your behalf, I have interviewed both the summit and navigator proceedings so that you can make arguments to the board about what your zoning ordinances are. And, and you can ask the board to have the company respect those zoning ordinances when applied to the permit. And that is secondary and prominent of how, how your county can kind of address the issues of pipelines. Um, if, and if the Iowa Utilities Board, Board is compliant with this, there's arguments you made that are not preempted at your local, they're not federal preempted, little type of, so it's important to make those arguments to the Utilities Board. Um, we've got a provision here related to... We've got a provision here related to public health physician's statement. I think one of the questions I have, whether your county board of health has not had a physician's statement, especially one related to state with existing uses and for occupied structures. Other county boards of health have done that and I don't know if I have documentation on whether your county has done. Let's answer to that question. I don't think we have.
I said on the board of health.
Okay. So here around here, top of Page 4, that's something that the board of health would need to do or we would need to take it out of the document. Or if they were about to give a statement, we would change that. Just something to apply. As you move forward with the zoning ordinance, it will be important for the county, for your zoning administrator, for your zoning commission, that they all have a role in administering both the zoning ordinance and moving forward with this particular ordinance. You want to be talking to the community, to the cities in the county, to economic developers, housing developers, to, to the schools and the hospitals, make them aware of the pipeline impact, make them aware of the ordinance you're trying to adopt and get their feedback on the setbacks, get their, especially with the cities. You're, you're trying to do them a favor by protecting the two mile area or so, I mean, maybe in the area of two and a half, but area outside of the city for them to grow. And so the ordinance has the provisions to protect that as well as to grow. And so the cities in your county should be aware of what you're doing and then you can talk to them about passing resolutions in support of it as you move forward in the process. One of the, the things that the ordinance does, here as we move on to the fifth page, is, is identify the date for a public hearing and assigning a zoning commission that supposedly needs to be built in. But as a zoning ordinance, there is a very particular process that the Iowa Code lays out that has to be followed for every zoning ordinance that involves the signing of the zoning commission, you know, taking a look at the proposed ordinance, holding a public hearing on it, collecting public feedback, writing a report, sending all of that back to the board of supervisors before final adoption. That makes it a little bit different than a regular ordinance, which the supervisors can simply adopt. Zoning ordinance has many more steps to follow through. It includes a public hearing, both the planning, the mission and the public hearing of the supervisors. And it'll be important, if you intend to adopt this ordinance, to make sure that you get all those boxes checked correctly so that your ordinance can't be attacked, you know, through some football from the adoption process. The acting is related to what I call the recital, which describes the legal authority in the general federal and state regulatory framework, talk about the situation with the pipeline companies, identify the relevant provisions of the comprehensive plan, generally lay the framework for anyone trying to read, understand, comply with the ordinance. So let me pause there for a minute and see if you have any questions about, about any of that. I'm sure it's very busy, but you know, our time is limited. So I, but I do want to have opportunity to review, to ask questions, to pardon bond to hear the ordinance.
Tim, you said that you had a sample letter to send to public health. Could you send that to me, email that to me?
Yes, it is, can you?
Yes, it is, sorry.
Yes, yes, I will, I will send you, there's probably documents that I'll send you with, some others. I have a couple, if you have what else that you want.
Okay, thank you.
Give us a quick outline on our procedures that we'll have to do. We have to have three readings, correct? Of the ordinance?
The zoning commission, the zoning commission doesn't, you know, what, what I would do is, and I can write all this down right after the fact too, but I'll go through it now in case you have questions. But I would, and, and maybe you have this already on your agenda, but I would, at a meeting with the supervisors, have an action item to refer a proposed ordinance to signing the zoning commission with their consideration.
We have that on the agenda today.
Yep, great. So that's kind of the first step. And then this document goes to them. This really is a draft document, right? It, it can and maybe even should change based on the process of, that any zoning ordinance would go through. So it would go to the commission, they would need to hold at least one public hearing on it. And other counties have held multiple meetings of the zoning commission, what they call working sessions, where the public can attend. And, you know, the zoning commission, when they get it, you know, may want to go through it, you know, provision by provision and understand it. You know, I have gone to some counties and, and attended this zoning commission meeting and helped set people through the requirements. And it's as much for the public as it is towards the zoning commission, but it's an important part of the process to understand the ordinance that you're, that you're considering, get people's feedback on it. So whether or not there's any working sessions or additional meetings, it's kind of up to the zoning commission and its chair. But they do have to be, to hold one public hearing. That has to meet the public hearing requirements for, for county meetings. So it has to be published in the newspaper and all that. That means you may meet a second time, approve at a, at a public meeting, take a vote in the action item approving their report with their recommendations. And if the, the ordinance here includes setbacks of, let's say, 1,000 feet from an occupied structure, but the zoning commission hears testimony at the public hearing from members of the community and there's, they feel that there's a basis to change that setback to 1,200 feet, that may make, that may be a recommendation that the zoning commission make. They would include that in their report. And then, you know, after the public hearing process and the approval of the report drafting, it comes back to you and then you would have the final decision on whether to make or change additional setback requirements, for example. And the same would be true of any other provision in ordinance from the fees that apply to the pipeline companies, which the ordinance includes, or to the requirement that landowners obtain the permit before signing the easement agreements with the pipeline companies. That's also a requirement of the draft ordinance. You know, the ordinance includes many features and components. It's a framework, most of which are not, you know, required of the, of the county. So, but there are particular goals and objectives, which is the various components of the ordinance have. Does that address the process enough? Or we'll get back to you. You can have three readings or you can waive them under, under the ordinance law, depending on how quickly you want to adopt it. You know, the county held three public hearings and not just three readings. I heard that they have a number of ordinance, not a zoning ordinance, but an ordinance. And I think they waived the second, third ones. So that's really the prerogative of the supervisors, you know, according to, you know, county ordinance statute law, like you follow and add it, up to you.
Can we have a reading before we send it to the, to the zoning commission, though?
Yes, nobody to go through the zoning commission. That part is required. It's required that they make a report. It's required that they have a public hearing. It's required that the supervisors hold one public hearing. So, you know, I, whether you want to waive the second, third readings or hold three public hearings, it's not difficult to hold a public hearing. You just need to notice it properly. You know, I would, I would say you could hold one public hearing and, and then just consider the reading at three, at three public meetings without holding, you know, three fully noticed public hearings on it. And that might be, might be the process you want to follow, but it's, it's certainly not, there's nothing wrong with giving more process and holding more public hearings and more public notice. And in this context, that could be fairly important, given both the high profile nature of the pipeline project, but also the need for all of these individual landowners to comply with the conditional use requirement in the ordinance. You know, the, what you're, what you're doing in the ordinance, if you would adopt it in the framework proposed, is you're checking that those individual easement requirements and the line locations that are going across the landowner's properties as they're negotiating with the pipeline companies. Who's going to make sure that the line location on that property complies with your setbacks? Well, that's, that's a role that you should take. And so the, the ordinance just asks the landowner to come in and get a, a conditional use permit and verify the line location of the property with regards to the setbacks that you set. And so for people to comply, they have to know about the ordinance's option manager requirement. That's a lot like if they had to get a building permit. And so if you can think of it that way, they've got, someone's trying to build a project on the property and they need to get county approval for this, like they would another time, mainly with project, right? But there's also a permit requirement on the pipeline company, of course. And so you're trying to address the issue of proximity to the pipeline in two ways. You know, one is put obligations on the pipeline companies, and another is put obligations on landowners in your county to negotiate and get a, a line location in place for everyone. So if I move forward down the ordinance, I want to take just a moment to explain how that is adopted. You already have a zoning ordinance and you are amending that zoning ordinance by enacting another ordinance. And this ordinance has a section, has a section one, section two, section three, section four, that's of the amendment, the zoning amendment to this ordinance with the ordinance that amends your current one. You have to amend an ordinance with an ordinance. You can't amend an ordinance with a resolution or you shouldn't. So I need to be careful, we recite whether referring to your existing ordinance or whether referring to the proposed ordinance, to make changes, the overall going on. So section one, section two, and section three make some changes to your current zoning regulation. Make some amendments to them to accommodate what is, what is down here, Article 25, specifically dedicated to hazardous liquid pipelines. So this would become Article 25 of your zoning ordinance and then some of your other articles that come as zoning ordinance would need to be renumbered. Okay? So I'm on page six now, where Article 25 begins. And that's really where the ordinance is proper regulating the location of the hazardous liquid pipelines to be in, lays out purposes, 25, 20, 25.1, the number of definitions. The definitions are important. They make reference to other, other laws so that we have proper coverage and overlap between the state and federal law applies to pipeline. After the definition, 25.2, there's a requirement to use pipelines as a condition to use flat, create a facility, use, use land in the county for a pipeline, you have to meet the condition to use flat your farm. Which means at 25.3, you have to obtain a permit, pipeline companies obtain a permit at the property. 25.4 requires everyone trying to use land for a pipeline to comply with separation requirements. Have any good separation requirements? The distances that you adopted at one hearing this summer, those could be changed, but I have the current draft of your ordinance includes the separation distances that you already identified, the two and a half miles to the, two and a half miles from church, school, making home. And so, you know, these separation distances are quite aggressive, if you will, and, you know, the totality of them likely would result in a pipeline not being able to come through the county. It would create a hardship if the pipeline companies do not challenge the ordinance in court. You know, they might still need a variance from the Board of Adjustment from separation requirements. And you would have to think at that point about, in total, in their totality, whether the distances are, are reasonable or whether they're going to grant variance or exceptions to the distances that you set out. Those are determinations made in the permitting process by the Board of Adjustment. And under Iowa law, those determinations would have to be made by the Board of Adjustment and not by the supervisors. Does that, does anyone have questions about that? Those are important points to be made here.
No, no questions.
Okay. So 25.5, the permit application requirements for the company and what they have to submit, fairly long list of things. 25.6, the requirement for property owners, short away. 25.7, the settlement. There are amounts in here, but if you'd like to change some amounts, you can. There's an application fee that the pipeline companies pay for each respective person in the county. There's a $50 application fee for property owners to make this use permit. Notably, there's $116,092 per mile of pipelines in all of the county that the various pipeline companies come to the county with, would have to pay once constructed in annual assessment. And then the pipeline companies have offered, in many cases, pay for emergency management training and equipment. That could certainly be a condition that your Board of Adjustment places on the permit. That might also affect the assessment in addition to them being liquid. There's a public hearing requirement at 25.8 for the pipeline companies. That quarter, when it is old landowners, they simply would need to have the permit approved by the Board of Adjustment at one of these meetings rather than through a public hearing There are specific reservations of the right to, to, that varies with Board of Adjustment At 25.10, there's some applicability that's important to note. The ordinance doesn't try to reach back and affect the terms of any easements that are already signed, but it would apply moving forward. It also doesn't attempt to impose these requirements on any true public utility that is someone serving customers in the county. Typically, a hazardous liquid pipeline probably doesn't serve any customers directly anyway, but it's terrible to say that they're serving customers in the county, but it's not imposing the requirements on them. It does require even existing pipelines to comply with reclamation, abandonment, decommissioning. At some point, a pipeline, you know, its use will cease, it will be decommissioned. And if it's a hazardous liquid pipeline, there are, there are some requirements in this ordinance to take care of, apply it in the ground, work with landowners to do that. But it provides substantial flexibility to the landowners. And they're not required to, they're not required to have the pipeline company kind of dig it up, but if they want that, then the pipeline company must agree to do that. So the ordinance later on does provide some options for landowners with regards to increasing 25.11 is a fairly long section. It addresses the requirements provided management is missing to your county, the deep can property plan or a spark, which you cannot. What you cannot do is dictate the company's response, but you can require them to coordinate with your emergency management team. We believe you can require them to turn over this information so that your EMPs, the city, and shared personnel, whatever you have, employees in your county, that they can be, that they can properly be prepared for an incident, if there is one, and they need information to do that, that's what Article 25.11 addresses. Article 25.12 addresses the abandonment, which I just mentioned a moment ago, maybe all the way down to the end, section seven, eight, nine, and 10. Section seven is standard, what we call repealer, or any ordinance, so that everything in conflict is revealed, to the extent it's in conflict. There's the flexibility clause, every one provision would be stricken down, anything else in the ordinance would stand, that was always part of the ordinance, and effective date, that includes point four, out of the passage, or the paper of the three readings. And that is the draft ordinance. I have about five minutes left before I have to hop off onto another call, but I can use those five minutes however you want.
I got one question. Planning and zoning doesn't want to take the responsibility of some of the requirements conveying passive back to the supervisor?
The Commissioner of Board of Adjustment.
Either one.
It depends on what it is, but in many cases, they cannot, there are statutory obligations. So, granting of conditional use permits, special exceptions, variances, is under the Board of Adjustment, and the supervisors cannot adopt one of the ordinance. When the last, the zoning commission considers the ordinance and makes a report with recommendations. You don't have to follow their recommendations, the supervisors, but you can't adopt one until you've got a report from them.
Okay.
So, the requirements like that are all without in Iowa code, and I have encountered with different counties committing a different level of compliance with those provisions, and so, some counties have had to go back and fix their current zoning ordinance to adjust to those requirements. I didn't see anything like that in your ordinance, as I said before, even though your comprehensive plan and ordinance is regarding Article 73, it was really well done at the time, you are largely compliant, as far as I can attest.
Doug, you got any questions?
No, not at this time.
I sit on the Board of Health, and what parts of this do we need to, do I need to take to the Board of Health for adoption?
Well, he would be taking to the Board of Health, it's a copy of the ordinance, invite him to attend, both public hearings, invite him to review the setback distances and the emergency management provisions, and gee, if they have comments, they don't need to take formal action necessarily, approving the ordinance, I mean, they don't have the authority to adopt the ordinance in the case. But, you know, just like with the Board of Health, the Board of Health certainly is an important institution in the community, and their thoughts on the ordinance should matter to you and to others, so, you know, it's important, because I have to make a statement, to, you know, draft a letter, or adopt a resolution of the board, that either gives a thumbs up, or makes recommendations on your setback distances. And you don't have to follow those, of course, you know, behind you, but, you know, if you adopt setback, as the recommendation of public health officials, then you have a rational basis for the setback that you adopted.
So, I should just take this entire document to the, we have a meeting tomorrow morning, so I should take a copy of this to the meeting and let the board review it, make any comments on it.
If Tim gets me that letter, I can give that letter to you.
Send it to Lindsay, so she has it, she can give it to Jennifer tomorrow.
Okay. Anything else in the board?
If there's a voluntary easement already signed for the pipeline prior to this being adopted, are they upheld to follow this ordinance, or they grandfather?
He wants to know if somebody's already signed an easement, how does this ordinance affect them?
The individual landowners, if they've already signed the easement, don't, it wouldn't invalidate their easement, but, so, it's, the grandfathering issue exactly, it's, it has to make sure that, as a county, you're not trying to use your zoning powers to invalidate contracts that have already been entered into, basically.
So, the setback would apply to them?
The pipeline companies, in order to get the zoning ordinance, would need to comply with the setback requirements, so, it, before they begin construction, they need to move the line, they'll have to go back and renegotiate those voluntary easements, but the requirement for the individual landowner to obtain the conditional use permit only applies to easements attempted to be entered into, act in the effective date of the ordinance, if that makes sense.
So, they would have to follow the setbacks, or no?
They'd have to follow the setback, correct?
If they were signed before the ordinance, no, but the pipeline company will. The pipeline company will still have to comply with it, so they'll have to renegotiate those easements.
Any other quick questions?
It sounds like his main concern is with these separation requirements. Would he have some specific recommendations on what would need to be changed in the separation requirements to make the whole ordinance a little more palatable, or he says that these requirements are pretty aggressive, so there might maybe be a little better chance of enforcement of this ordinance if some of those distances were not quite as aggressive.
He's concerned about how aggressive setbacks are in the ordinance, and if it would be better if they weren't quite so aggressive, so that would pass, what's your opinion?
I, I think that we do need to be careful about the totality of the setback. If, you know, if the goal of the county is to try to stop the pipelines altogether, I guess that's one goal. If the goal of the work is to try to set setbacks that could be complied with in the event that the pipeline companies get their state permits, then you may want to consider a little bit, a little bit of flexibility, at least, on the separation requirements, but, you know, I, that could cause problems in the Board of Adjustment process, if there would be, for example, denial of a permit, but we're still a number of steps away from that, and, you know, my guess is, no matter what the setbacks are that you choose, the history of Summit, at any rate, has been to any counties that have adopted any ordinance at all related to this. So, we may never wind up with an application at the Board of Adjustment before we wind up in federal court.
Does that answer your question?
I think so.
Do I need to hop off at this time?
Oh, okay.
I'd love to keep working with your staff, it would be really great to work with so far as we've developed this ordinance.
Thank you much.
Thank you.
All right, thank you, bye.
Bye.
Nancy, you have something quick?
I was just wondering if we had a waiver option of workaround for Summit, if an occupied resident would sign a waiver allowing the pipeline to go within a half mile of their house, that that would be okay, no, you can't have a waiver?
In the ordinance that we have in front of us, we don't have any waivers.
Right, but I was wondering if it would be easier to defend if we had a waiver in it.
Well, or at least let people that don't care get paid well, and say, okay, I don't care because within a quarter of my house, those people should have the right to go ahead and say, but it's true.
So, if they already signed, they already got their money.
Well, but then, you guys are coming back on the backside saying you can't put it to there, even if you've already paid the money.
Well, I was told they can't take the money from you, what you got, you got.
Is there a thing in here that allows each individual person to say yea or nay?
No.
Another thing, why are we even here if this is a pipeline for profit, and it's not legal to have it? That utility board is supposed to turn it down anyway, or at least not let them use eminent domain that they won't be used.
At the present time, I think we should probably send this to the zoning commission, and I think if you want to make amendments to it, it could be done at that time. The way I understood it, is that how you understood it, Doug, that the zoning commission would recommend it?
The zoning commission would end up having public, at least one public hearing, if not more, and they would then send a recommendation back to the Board of Supervisors, and the Board of Supervisors can, will have a public hearing as well.
Correct.
With that ordinance, and put it in its final, final.
Draft form.
Form and act on it.
But at some point, we have to hit it to the zoning commission, we're running out of time.
Yeah.
So, today, I would entertain a motion to send this to the Sioux County Zoning Commission. I have a motion by Casey, do I have a second?
Second.
Second by class, any more discussion? Do a roll call vote, please.
When the notification for public hearing for the planning and zoning commission is not greater than 30 and not more than 15 in a paper, 15 days. I had some vacation planned for the middle of January, so what were you guys thinking for getting this back to the Board of Supervisors?
Jack, you're going to be gone until February, right?
You can't be a hippie, listen.
15 days today?
Well, it would have to be next week. Your publications are Bay of Crossway City and Algonquin.
So, you got 15 days for publication?
From that publication, yes.
Is that going to be in your vacation?
My vacation is planned for January 18, 19, and 20. So, it's right in that time period, so, you know, I guess I don't know what, again, what you guys, your timetable is, I think you probably want to get that back as, turned around as quickly as possible.
Well, you're not going to, yeah, but we're into the 23rd of January, then, that week.
And then, my, I don't know what this is going to take, but we're going to have to also have Tim on the phone, or in person at these public hearings, which is going to cost, is that going to be something the Board of Supervisor is going to pay for, planning and zoning pays for?
I, you would think that we go back to the Board of Supervisors.
Very good.
Yeah. We'll make it work as quick as you can, Doug.
I will, yes.
Appreciate it.
Just so you know that I do have some time, but I'm going to have to visit with the, we're down to three people on that board as well.
Correct. That was my next question, do you?
I got to make sure that they're all going to be able to attend, so, because they're going to have to have, all three of them will have to vote on that, three out of five to get that.
Who's on the planning and zoning?
The chair is Brian Tool, Dave Rock from the northern part of the county, and Mark Studer from the southern part of the county are the members.
Looking for work, you need somebody on there.
The board should be appointing people to that board as well, yes.
I was asking who was on, I didn't want to be on.
And the other thing, just as a reminder, when some of, in our initial discussions with wind generation and conditional permits, the Board of Adjustment, who would be making decisions on variances, conditional use permits, special use permits, we did have people resigning from that board because they did not want to, that's a volunteer type thing, and they did not want to be put in a position of criticism, would that be an accurate situation?
We'll have to deal with that when they come, Doug.
Correct.
Yeah.
Well.
We are aware of that.
Some of the emotional situations that happened.
And Doug, if you need me to do anything, that's all for that process, just let me know, or if I should be doing anything now with the hatchet.
Okay, very good.
Where does that vote if we meet, Doug? In like, when, the evenings days?
Evenings, and usually just here in the courthouse, but I've been also, been doing, been having all of them virtually also, via Zoom, so.
But for this particular situation, will it be public?
Oh, it'll be public and virtual, both.
Okay.
Do you volunteer? He's smiling, that's all you need to do is go to the point.
I think he shook his head, yes.
Any other questions? If not, please do roll call vote.
Casey.
Yes.
Block.
Yes.
Black.
Yes.
Jerk.
Yes.
If anybody would like to be on that Board of Justice.
Planning and zoning commission and Board of Adjustment.
With that, before we go back to the agenda, we're going to take a 15 minute break. Thank you.
Yes, thank you.
Three of them, three of them, Shannon, three of Shannon and Doug, to the east.
Oh, they're over, where there's no houses on.
Yeah, but that goes all the way around to them.
What are we going to do now?
They're going to come down, pretty much straight down there.
And then go across the field.
Mm-hmm. You've got to be, 10 and a half miles, like, three of Shannon and Elizabeth.
That's next.
Oh, it's next.
Oh, what's that?
We'll go back into session, and Willie.
What?
You have a whole bunch of people here.
That means I don't have to talk.
Well, I think, you know, you can introduce them.
This is Jonathan, he was the one responsible for the install, Roger was the design, and Doug is our architect, and Chris is with plumbing controls, the control guy, you know him, and Ron, Ron's here too.
Yep. Okay, so, who's going to take it away? We had issues with the controls.
Yeah, I'll go ahead and start, again, Roger Lesher, the engineer of record for the project. The project consists of replacing 16 rooftop units, the existing rooftop units were trading units, and replace them pretty much with the kind rooftop units with a little bit upgraded efficiency associated with the new units. The units had a delay in shipping, I will say, we've seen delays shipping not just from train, but units across the spectrum from all manufacturers, and the delay tends to be in the compressors that all manufacturers use, they tend to use the same compressors and installing their units. The, on top of that, we do have a delay in the control. Uh, the, on top of that, we do have a delay in the control boards for the units. Uh, this is something that I haven't seen across all manufacturers, but, you know, control boards, like everything else in this odd world we have, do have a computer chip associated with it, so the units are installed. Uh, they are using the original controls from the sixteen units that were removed in anticipation of getting the new sixteen control boards. Uh, talked to the manufacturer last Thursday, they have two of the sixteen control boards that were just shipped last week. There is no word as of nine o'clock this morning when the remaining fourteen will ship.
That was one of the reasons that we put everything in, was because of the controls, am I wrong?
Correct.
So not having new controls is kind of sore spot with us.
Yeah, the, the, um, there's a couple different options to move forward. Uh, really, the two options that make sense would be install third-party controls. Uh, climate control has the ability to do that. Uh, there's a detriment though, if you do that. Uh, the manufacturer, to get the high efficiencies, uh, and this is across all manufacturers, when you use a variable speed compressor. The variable speed compressor allows you better humidity control and associated energy savings. To get that function, you have to use the factory controls, a third-party cannot control that function, or it would void warranty. So that leaves us two options. If you were to install third-party controls, you would get the controls, uh, on the central console system, and you could close out your project. But you would lose that energy savings and a little bit of creature comfort. Um, or we could continue to run the units on the existing thermostat without being able to tie into the central system. You still have heating and cooling. Uh, right now, you do not have that efficiency that's associated with the variable speed control, and you don't have it tied into the central system and wait for the new control boards to come in.
So when's your best, your opinion on when the other fourteen will come in?
You know, i- i- if this were a question two years ago, I could answer that. My best opinion is, I would hope that they would be in within the next couple months. But this is a weird world we live in. Uh, I, that would just be, that's just my best guess. I can't even say it's really an opinion, it'd just be my best guess. I'm hope, hopefully optimistic because we did receive two of the sixteen. And I have heard other train offices have been receiving the control boards. Uh, but then that's where my, you know, optimism would, you know, just have to stop because we only did receive two of the sixteen.
So your efficiencies would be greater as the temperature will warm up, or am I wrong to assume that?
Correct, that is a cooling function, not a heating function. You do lose some efficiencies to actually not being tied to your central system. Uh, when you're tied to the central system, you can, uh, set occupancy times, you can, you know, and do some other functions. Plus troubleshooting, you would lose those functions also until the boards come in. Or you do a third-party controller.
So the third-party controller would take some of the efficiencies away and would void the warranty?
No, it would not void the warranty. Uh, you, you would lose the variable speed compressor. Uh, the units, some of the units are two-speed, the third-party controller could control it for two-speed compressor. Uh, but, and that would, the warranty would remain. You only would void warranty if the third-party controller tries to control the variable speed.
So Roger, I think I hope you can see what you're kind of, controls.
So, yeah, as far as warranty goes, we're not ripping anything out of the rooftop unit, so that is a moot point. We're basically putting a controller on that would act as a thermostat, but I would write a program for it, much like I've done in this building. I've messed around with those rooftops, and they may not modulate as well as they would with the back net cards in them, but they do modulate. I can do that simply with a wire on there, and it, you just put it on there, we watch the display on the unit. As far as the troubleshooting goes, there's a display on every rooftop unit, so all of the, all the information is on that rooftop. You may lose a little bit of information that we would be able to pull out of the unit, because it would be our controller versus the card that came from the manufacturer. But as far as the efficiency goes, you haven't had economizers operational on those rooftop units for probably
Twenty-two years.
Twenty-two years. So any efficiency you're losing on the air, on the, the compressor side, we're going to gain tenfold by running economizers and using those to cool, just like we've been doing in this building. We've been cooling the building in the winter when we're not running the chiller. So it's going to be a very similar style that way. Uh, the biggest reason why they weren't running economizers was due to a fire years ago, and they, the prisoners were complaining about the smoke. There's things we can do to try to mitigate that here in the future, if that was an issue, we, we can shut it all down remotely. We don't need to, to worry about that as an issue, so.
So I guess my question is, until the other fourteen come, can we run off the controls that we have now without doing any damage?
The controls that they have now, that's what they're operating right, uh, on now, and it is the existing thermostat that's in the space. Yes, they would operate without damage. And continue to keep.
Is that one option that we should, is that a good option or a bad option?
To run them on the existing controls until the train control boards come in?
Yeah.
That would be my recommendation.
That's what I think would be best, but I'm just.
I got one question, what happens when we don't have any thermostats left? If one of them shit out, and there's one in the dispatch right now? That, if it pulls off the wall, it don't work. It has to just hang there, you just don't touch it.
He said there's two thermostats are here?
No, two controllers.
Control work. You put one of those in, and one sh, one craps out?
That's up to you guys.
I, I have a price to put our own controls on, and I have all parts available. So I've, I've ordered parts prior to this project, just because of inventory constraints and everything going on, so. I, I have sixteen controllers, sixteen thermostats, plenty of current sensors, and plenty of temp sensors, so. Just throwing it as an option out there.
Yeah, as the engineer, I'm, I'm not opposed to a third-party control option. I just want everybody to know that there will be a little bit of efficiency loss associated with it. And that is truly, uh, you know, something that we did pay an upgrade for the units on.
Well, I have a problem with not getting what we paid for. I guess. I don't want anybody else to say.
What's that?
Yeah, I guess the question is, is what would that add to the contract fee to put third-party controls on and move up the train control?
Sixteen forty-five per unit, so it'd be twenty-six, three-twenty would be the proposal that we have.
Say that in dollars, twenty-six?
Total would be sixty-six thousand, three hundred and twenty dollars to put our controllers on, our thermostats. We would be tying that in with the system, similar to the way that it would have been. But if the R controllers, our programming, um, and the labor to, to put that stuff in there.
So we get the money back from the other ones, the other sixteen then?
I can't speak on that, I didn't provide that equipment.
So what would that money be?
It was, uh, it would just be the price of the controllers, what train said was, you know, somewhere around two hundred and.
Forty-five hundred dollars. Forty-five hundred dollars to not have train supply the sixteen back-end cards.
You, you guys realize that we funded this through ARCA? And we really aren't supposed to add costs onto it on the back, backside? So I do have an issue with that. So you want a decision from us today, Willie?
I don't care, I mean, it, to me, it's, we've been pretty gracious, and I understand that they can't control it, but we had a completion date back in May.
I know.
With actually no end in sight right now, I mean, we're just guessing.
And how do you put a price on something you can't get your hands on?
Well, the price of the fourteen controllers is locked in, correct?
The price of the additional fourteen controllers is part of the project.
Yeah, that, that ain't pricing going to change.
And train's going to cover the installation, they're going to bring up their own technicians out of Illinois to install those in the field. So you're, I mean, if you wait for the new boards, there's no, there's no price change, I mean, other than the time.
Yeah, that's my opinion. I don't want to add another twenty-six thousand for the cost of the project. No.
Yeah, my quick math, that delta would be about twenty-one thousand, six hundred.
Well, I don't want to add that much either, no. So go ahead and try, put a hurry up on the controllers if you can.
Yeah, we've been putting as much pressure on it as we can, and, um, yeah, and yeah, and it, I, I do understand that there's a limit to your patience, and, you know, they're very well met come up, you know, uh, I can understand if you would want to move forward with the third-party controls and get the project cleared out.
The problem I'm having is that this delay is affecting me the most, because I can't finish my part, the units are on the roof, they're running.
Yeah, I have.
I can't do anything else, but I'm the one that's going to be eating most of these costs. I mean, that's, that's the part that's very frustrating about this whole thing, when it's supposed to be done in May. Now we're pushing into twenty-twenty-three, so that's, that's really the only piece that I have in this. And this, this, this whole thing that gets frustrating is that this was brought up six months ago. And this was the original proposal, this is what we were asking for in the first place with this whole project. And it's been a very confusing part up to this point, so that, that's my two cents on it. So I guess if there's costs run over, I guess that's something that'll have to be addressed, because this is not acceptable on my side of the, where I come from. I got a lot of business going on, so.
Speaking from, from a climate controls perspective, uh, um, uh, we were, the, the units got delayed first, and then, uh, the units were supposed to ship with the cards. The units did not come with the cards, and then, uh, then we were supposed to get the cards separate, and we got two of the sixteen. Uh, so, uh, yeah, I do understand that they're basically sitting here not able to finish the project. Uh, but outside of, you don't continue to have time in the project, do you?
I've been here today for a meeting, I mean, it's, it keeps going and going, and we still don't have a date. I mean, we keep putting a date on it, but nobody, I, I understand it's not, it's train, but I, I mean, we can't finish the project, and that's, that's where it becomes frustrating, is that this isn't, this is a problem that happens on a lot of projects, that the projects get delayed, and then the people at the end, they're the ones that get the shaft, and it's just very frustrating from a complete standpoint here of, we're waiting on something that was promised that was going to be in the units, and then they're not, and now we're still waiting. And we, I haven't seen the two installed, and I mean, maybe they just shipped, but we still don't have a date. And that was, I guess that's the part where I'm, I'm frustrated, is that the emails that I've been getting say that if we don't have an answer by the fifteenth, then we need to come here. But if we're just coming here to have more extension, that, that's where I, I guess I'm, I'm a little frustrated by that standpoint, because when's the ending? When, when do I actually finish my part? That's, that's.
You have to talk to the guy behind you.
No, I know, that's, that's what I'm getting at, it just drags on for, for a long time.
I understand your problem, but it's like this beyond what.
Yeah, no, I, I get it, you guys got to do what you got to do, I just, that's, that's where it just seems like we keep getting pushed back by train, and it's not actually getting anywhere.
So give us an answer from the train people, what, are you not?
They can't.
I mean, are you not, are you not making any controllers right now?
Train ain't here.
Well.
Just the installer and the guy that proposed the project.
So, does anybody know, are they just not making any controllers at all?
They're not able to get the chips to make the controller. It's, it's the computer chip shortage.
Same thing happened with the cars.
They have had several offices within the United States that have gotten their two-hundred card allocation. Train DuPont has promised us the first sixteen that come in are going directly to this project, because they know this has been such a hard deal for all of us since the bid last December, so. Take them on their word, we're going to get the first sixteen cards they have to. Obviously, like Roger said, we don't know if that's in two weeks, we don't know if that's in two months. Um, I'm willing to contact them if Ron or Willie can give me, uh, the information on the current controllers you're using. I can get ahold of the control guys at train, see if they're done with a job, if they've got something laying around in a box. See if they can come up with a couple of controllers as an act of good faith, just based on the fact that they've kind of put us all over a barrel, over this thing, so. I mean, I'm willing to reach out and do whatever I can on my end, so.
I'd appreciate if you would do that.
If you can find one, I would take it, just to have it on eBay six fifty-five is the best I've found.
Yeah, so I'll, I'll, I'll get the information from Ron and Willie, see what we come up with.
I'd appreciate that.
And they do, they will.
As far as the contractor, I see what you're talking about, it's way beyond our control.
Yeah.
Anything else? Ron?
Just rest, ready?
Yep.
Paying for something we ain't got.
World ain't supposed to be perfect, but it's not supposed to be quite this bad either. Thank you, guys, appreciate you coming in. Thank you. Do we have our IT person here, should we jump up to the telephone?
I can come back too, guys, I don't know what you're, just want to be there.
No, I lost my tip. Oh, there it is.
Who's got one second?
Yeah.
Oh, it doesn't just get taken, one second.
Oh, okay.
It's not going to be.
I'm going to hold on.
Okay.
Okay, so this, we, I just made an error on the last one, I forgot to add a levy when I was calculating, um, the, the tip for Buffalo Township. And so it's just decreased by, um, a hundred and seventy dollars. So it went from eighty-one, five ninety-eight to eighty-eight, ninety-one, so just a little bit difference.
Eighty-eight, ninety-one, that's not correct.
Eighty-eight, ninety-one.
It's incorrect.
What?
It's the correct amount.
Yes.
Eighty-eight, thou, eighty thousand, eight hundred and ninety-one.
Correct.
So I would like a motion to approve the chairperson to sign the certificate of indebtedness to tip increment financing for eighty thousand, eight hundred and ninety-one dollars. Motion by class, do I have a second, by a loss? Any discussion? If you're in all of the favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carried. Derek? Phone said I got the right page.
Sorry.
I'll give mine aside you over a little.
Space, yeah. Do you want to?
No, that's good enough for me.
That one, one don't work, Doug.
Yeah, I need the ladder.
Okay, so last year during budget negotiations, we talked about the need for a new phone system. We got board approval to get that done for this festival year. Um, we've got the final pricing reminder on why we're doing the new phone system.
Um, we've got the final pricing reminder on why we're doing the new phone system is, number one is our current phone system is ten years old. It's a Toshiba system. It, um, Toshiba sold their phone, um, business about five years ago to Mitel. When they did that, Mitel came in and said, hey, we'll give you all new phones, but you had to go with the hosted solution. And you'll see why in a couple of minutes, why we didn't do that. Um, it's significantly more expensive to go with the hosted solution. Um, so when Mitel bought the business, they quit selling licenses for the Toshiba and quit supporting it, um, directly. So we've been running for about four or five years without that support. So if something were to fail, it'd be kinda done in water. The other part of that conversation is that we just had a federal risk assessment. And one of the results of the risk assessment was that our current phone system has some significant vulnerabilities. One of its core pieces runs Windows seven, and so we have to do something about that box as well, so. Um, our savings, so our ten-year cost with the new phone system, the county portion, we're looking at saving about a hundred and ten thousand dollars. The PD and dispatch portion, we're looking at saving about twenty-four thousand. The clerk of courts, I didn't include their cost savings because that's not directly for us, but they'll have some savings as well. Uh, but the budgets that you guys directly support will have a significant reduction. Um, what we looked at as far as percentages, um, the county portion, we're, it's, it's kinda hard to read, but the, um, percentages are based off the number of phones, physical phones that we have in the buildings. We have a hundred and twenty-one phones between all the agencies that we support. Um, the county portion is seventy-four percent, which is a sixty thousand dollar investment. PD portion is twelve percent, dispatch is two percent, the court has eleven percent, and then, um, we've got some of the other offices as well that'll be a build their portion. Um, so we looked at, we looked at, uh, multiple systems. Number one, um, I think we've got really two options. Number one is we do nothing. And our ten-year total on that is about two hundred and forty-three thousand dollars. Buying the new system is about a hundred and thirty-three thousand dollars over the same ten-year period. Our three alternate quotes came in at a hundred and sixty-seven, two eighty-eight, and three hundred thousand dollars. And those are the hosted options, um, so they're significantly more expensive, so. Um, I'm looking for a, um, motion by the board to approve the phone system and then authorize the chairman to sign that quote. Um, yes.
Dependability, usability?
It'll be same as what we've got now. The Toshiba's a very reliable. Phones will be the same. Um, we did talk to Mr. Heidner. He's got a couple of these out in his other businesses and he's had great luck with the phones, um, and the phone system, so I'm not, uh, not concerned about that. And our cost savings, I did include two percent increase on phone bills every year and then I put five thousand dollars in maintenance from year five to year ten. Uh, the first five years of maintenance and support is all covered on that. And then we'll have a few phones. Um, we've got some power users that will have, uh, Outlook integration as well, so they'll be able to use, um, Outlook to dial calls and then when inbound, inbound calls appear, they'll show in Outlook as well as who the caller is, so.
So I saw one of the bits that you, like, long distance charging stuff, ooh, our carrier's still gonna be AMU?
Our carrier's still gonna be AMU. We looked at doing an outside vendor, but the service that we get then from that and the support that we get from having someone right in town here is, is significantly better, so, um, we, we stayed with them. Long distance is seven cents a minute, which I think is what we pay them, so. But yeah, the sub-trunks, um, will be the savings and then because we're not getting billed individually by department, um, we can share twenty-four phone lines where we have forty-one right now, so. That's part of the savings.
Yes.
Are you?
So we need a motion to go with Midwest AEC?
Yes. Yeah.
Does anybody like to make that motion? And authorize the chairman to sign the code? I will move that we go with Midwest AEC and authorize the chairman to sign the code. Do I have a second? Second one. Hearing now, do a roll call, please.
Yes.
Ross.
Yes.
Yes. You got it.
Thank you. And then Lori and Doug were, um, very helpful in testing phones and going through this process as well, so thank you guys for being part of that. Appreciate that.
You gonna get me the paper this time?
Yes, it's in my office. I'll grab it. Do you want the projector on? No, thank you. Okay. Thank you.
We're up to Doug. Sign twenty-eight agreement with the I.D. department.
That's Nick.
Nick Ram, yes.
Morning, sir.
You're up, hey?
Okay, good.
Twenty-eight?
Yep, yep, between, uh, uh, I.D. department and transportation in Cassoot County dealing with driver's license.
Okay.
I mean, Todd reviewed it, said it looked good, and, uh, just looks like they're just doing old housekeeping.
How come they have three pages of looking good?
Huh? There's several pages. Not every page had any change.
So is this something we sign every year or?
Yeah, it hasn't been signed since seventeen. So like I said, they're just kinda doing some upkeep and, or housekeeping and I bring some things up to, to AEC.
Do I have a motion to approve the twenty-eight agreement between I.D. department of transportation and Cassoot County? So moved by Mr. Ross and seconded by plat. Any discussion? Hearing now, hold of the favor, say aye please.
Aye.
Votes, question carried.
Okay, now if you have the one I need, Roger, son.
Yes.
Is everything hot a little bit better?
Okay, yeah. Yeah.
We're making all even.
Yep, and then if I get a copy of that, then I gotta send it out to the B.O.T. and then I think I gotta send another copy then too. I wanna email a copy eventually.
Important that I have a license, I guess.
People seem to like it.
Yeah.
It's pretty handy.
You file the twenty-eight then?
Um, they do. I didn't save that. I didn't save that.
Okay. So are we supposed to do that after or remember this or?
No, no, just whenever they send it saying, okay, we have some updates.
No, we're good. Yeah, thanks, man.
You bet. Good day.
Now we're up to secondary road equipment purchase.
Yes, um, last week we spoke a little bit about, uh, I, uh, get the right folder here. Requested some quotes from, uh, Ziegler Cat and Altorfer Cat for a two-eighty-nine D-three compact track loader trading in our two thousand nine, two-seventy-nine C. Um, this way we would, but first of all, the T-seventy-nine needs approximately, what's been estimated, thirty-five thousand dollars of, uh, repairs. And I believe that, uh, for under sixty thousand with the trade, we would be able to, uh, have a new one that would be compatible with the one we just purchased, so. I have a bid from Altorfer and Ziegler and I'll read them. I guess I have Ziegler. Um, first, I'll open up that. Gotta get my pen. There we go. Okay, so Ziegler has a base bid for the two-eighty-nine, uh, eighty-four thousand four hundred sixty-nine dollars. Eighty-four thousand four hundred sixty-nine dollars in trade value of twenty-three thousand five hundred dollars. So the purchase price would be sixty thousand nine hundred sixty-nine. And Altorfer's quote is ninety-one three hundred fifty, ninety-one thousand three hundred fifty dollars. And they have a, a trade of twenty-two thousand for the two-seventy-nine, so that would be sixty-nine thousand three hundred fifty dollars for purchase price. Um, I believe that I included a motion. Did I include a motion with your, uh, information? Well, I'd request that the board would go ahead and approve the Ziegler Cat, uh, purchase for eighty-four thousand four hundred sixty-nine dollars. I might have that available here. Could print it too. All right.
We need, we need.
I apologize. I, I think I got that document.
Just I didn't find it.
No, I didn't, I didn't approve, I didn't write one. I can quickly do it.
Do you want us to make a motion to approve it?
Yeah, it would read motion by, seconded by to approve the purchase of a twenty-twenty-three. Better verify that.
Should we get nine twenty-three?
March fifteenth. It's, uh, it says two-eighty-nine D-three compact track loader for eighty-four thousand four hundred sixty-nine dollars. Less the trade for the two thousand nine Caterpillar two-seventy-nine C for twenty-three thousand five hundred dollars for net purchase price of sixty thousand nine hundred sixty-nine dollars. I apologize for not getting that to you.
Would you like to make that motion? Motion by plat. I'll second it. Any discussion? Hearing now, do a roll call, please.
Casey?
Yes.
Ross?
Yes.
Clapp?
Yes.
Darps?
Yes.
Thank you. And there was no, uh, there's no request for construction of the road right away. Uh, just kinda bring you up with the, uh, road department and zoning, um, the Irvington Bridge, I've been in contact and I will be calling that contractor again today. Um, they still have cleanup. They have some, uh, things to strip. But, uh, my intention is to still, uh, get that thing constructed, get that open to traffic. Uh, they are thirty days over. They're a lot of time, thousand dollars per day liquidated damages. And I've informed them of that and at this time they're not saying anything to me. But we are continuing to assess liquidated damages, whether they are working or not right now, so. But I'm, I'm trying to put as much pressure on them as I can. The bridge up in Lincoln Township, the work has been suspended. The two wind power projects, uh, they're pretty much suspended as well, uh, with the weather. The, both of them have, for the roads, very minor work that needs to be done and they can do it next year. Uh, we have an open position in the mechanic shop. I've interviewed two people for the Titanca position and I'm getting background checks uh, for those and make it, I'll make a decision to, uh, whether or not to offer or not at this time. Other than that, uh, we did have a meeting down in Des Moines, the county engineers conference last week, uh, there's an all systems permit. I don't know if the board is aware of that, that people can buy five hundred dollars and drive on all roads in the, uh, in the state, uh, except for the interstate. That all systems permit now is going to have a twelve percent increased load on that. Cassoot County, we are going to participate in that. Uh, the permit is five hundred dollars. Counties will be dividing up seventy-five percent of that, uh, for whoever participates. So there will be a little bit of revenue there, but there will be heavier loads out on our roads as well. So, um, we are participating.
So who can apply for that permit?
Anyone. But it can only go up, it can increase a, like an eighty thousand pound load from eighty thousand to ninety-six.
Do they have to have the axles to support that thing?
Well, they, they're supposed to have their axles still twenty thousand. And tandems can go up just a little bit greater.
Right, but if you don't have a third axle on your grand trailer, you're not gonna go to ninety-six.
Well, you're allowed to, but for the gross load, but it'll be difficult with the axle loadings as well. So I don't, that's gonna be a, I think it's a difficult one. It's, it's similar.
It's also proclamation she puts in every year anyway, correct, the governor?
Well, the proclamation, it's, the intent, I believe, was to make that proclamation permanent. But they also, they just went ahead and said all loads divisible or indivisible. Um, it doesn't have to be anything that's agriculturally related. So if a guy has a machine that he's hauling, um, all over the place, it's, you know, ninety thousand pounds instead of eighty and meets a axle requirements, then that five hundred dollar permit would be the way to go instead of getting single trips and all that.
That's for the whole year?
That's for a year, yes.
Pretty inexpensive.
What's that?
Pretty inexpensive.
Yes, it is when you start talking about. All right. So other than that, I'll get, I'll type up that motion, Tammy, and bring it up to you or email it to you or something, so. Uh, I don't know if the board has any questions of me at all.
So, yeah, Saturday late afternoon, I was coming home from the farm.
Okay.
And I went down that Galvez Road.
Right.
And the south lane completely bare where they milled it, there's about this much ice on the north side, show. on the north side of the road. Then there's a strip about this big going right near your tires for driving. And as soon as where they quit milling it, there wasn't nothing on the blacktop again. So how they milled it, uh, road grade, you can't get any snow and ice on it. But it's, like I said, it was solid ice.
Yeah. I, you mentioned that and I gotta get down there sometime and look at that, I don't know.
Probably hasn't thought of it.
No, it hasn't.
That and, uh, he comes zipping through Saturday, I knew the wind was still blowing, but he still came through Irvington on Saturday, made it past. And then, uh, sitting at the breakfast table Sunday morning, church starts at 8:30 at Irvington. People start getting to church, uh, 7:30, 4:00, 8:00. Nine o'clock, you come to town and move to town Irvington. It's like you can't get through without church people.
Yeah.
So you might wanna come a little earlier if you ever goes out on Sundays.
Yeah, I mean, that's just a.
Yeah.
He was running his pavements first and then that's when he got there, so.
But the road that he did have to get, I had most half of cleaned out and Red had the other half cleaned out, so he was pretty good on that road anyway.
Yeah.
And there's a person that lives on that blue house right down the road from me.
Which direction?
South.
Okay.
You might wanna talk to him. He's got a trailer park right on the side of the road and the snowplow has to go like this to go around him. He's got a trailer full of metal and he was working on a project.
The hay?
Yeah, it got cold, it's just sitting there now.
All right.
Everybody gotta drive around it.
Yeah, all right.
Man, I don't ask him to get it moved. But he's got, his driveway is empty, back it in there and work on it.
Yeah. Withum, Dick, Dick Withum, he lived there, right?
Right across the road.
Right across the road and, um, it was Barney.
Yep.
Barney moved one of his vehicles one time with the blade and I got, I got some rear end cheat off on that one, so.
Yep, Barney was good.
Thank the guys who are covering tight. Sitting out this morning covering tight.
Yeah, we're, everybody's, that's a, the community, that's the village taking care of that, so. We got a lot of people going around there, but yeah, they're, they keep communicating, they just know where they're supposed to. They've redrawn, redrawn their districts, so thank you. Glad it's working.
It's working.
Good.
Appreciate it, Doug.
You're welcome, yeah.
Anything else for Doug?
The boys coming out for Christmas this year, aren't they? Weather's looking?
We'll tell, I'll tell you.
It's already windy on the whole day, it's sunny this Christmas.
Yeah. No, no, see, right now, yeah, that wind is really, just see how much snow we had, yes.
Thank you, Doug, Merry Christmas.
Uh, I, I'll be up here with that drainage district procedure.
Okay.
So I'll stay up here.
That's thanks. So with that, we will expense the county and go into drainage. Mark, the first thing I have on the agenda for drainage is procedures and conditions for construction and drainage district right away.
That was emailed and it should be in your electronic folder in the drainage. Or I guess I didn't email it, it's in the drainage portion of it. Get the right one. And there is a motion on there as well. I kinda just reformatted it, but the only change that I made in there was that it be on sheet four of 14, uh, under one, the application approval process. Paragraph one, each application, it's kind of in the middle of that paragraph. Each application shall be assessed a fee of up to $7,500 for each crossing. And that used to read up to $1,000. So just moved, uh, changed 1,000 to 7,000, $7,500.
The rest of it's all the same?
The rest of, all of it is the same, yes.
So do I have a motion to approve the trade change in construction procedures for drainage districts?
So.
Motion by Casey, seconded by, looks like a, seconded by Ross. Any more discussion? Hearing now, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Votes, votes you carry now.
Very good then, that's all that I have.
Now, now it's Merry Christmas, Doug.
You guys gonna grab a bite to eat at lunch or anything? Well, if you are, give me a call, otherwise, yes. Everybody have a Merry Christmas.
Yeah, we'll, we'll contact you if it's.
Sure.
What did I say?
Yeah, there's a drainage.
Look, there've been thoughts. Hey, uh, that's in our board package, correct, Mark?
It's on the drainage.
No, you were gonna say.
It was in drainage? I read it once.
So I'm gonna, uh.
Drainage?
Yeah, yeah, it's half drainage.
There it was. Does anybody have any concern with just having somebody sign with initials and have a contractor, or the contractor sign with a name that you can't read?
I do.
I think you should be able to read his name.
I don't like to. Good to see that, I don't maybe there.
I have no idea who it is and I'm not, I don't think that we should take it. We'll put it on you again if you're next week. Think that's all right, what's your answer?
Close is missing, I was there. I think he should be present.
Okay.
So he puts his name on it.
Is that all right, Mark? Yeah. And we have one in the drainage repair. And that's just dipping, so I think that we can put that on next week and let Mr. Scheckor decide who we want to do it. If it would be appropriate.
Okay.
You're not gonna dip it this winter, are you?
No, no.
Anything else, Mark?
I was at Kevin's yesterday and I thought it was Earp leading directions, maybe it was Raisles. Two Long Reaches going, uh, east on 18. Would that be, would it be Raisles doing that back one stuff or?
They, I've gotten four bills for them, so they could be for the six or eight that they were gonna do.
So it must have been.
They're working on them.
I seen two Long Reaches and you don't see too many Long Reaches around here. Okay.
They started. Thank you, Mark.
Well, that one, I think I tried to find the pipe, probably gonna find it on the ground a little bit hard, so.
Ain't that, ain't. Oh, sorry. No, you can rip right through it, there's not enough moisture, is.
No, that's true.
We dug a hole the other day, shocked me.
Wow.
Even with a backhoe, rip right through it. No teeth, just, you know, it's created a way, well, but I'm not. And I'm no good at running this. If I can do it, anybody.
Do you have a starter?
Not that old.
Thank you, Mark.
Thanks, Mark.
Merry Christmas.
Yeah, Merry Christmas, Mark. Do you have any to meet with Mr. Casey?
Uh, well, on this last, um, Wednesday, it was in there, the minutes were in the folder. And people called me on that, uh, pipeline and that road, like I said, it's, he approved the road already, so there ain't nothing we can do. They should have drowned it down about two or three inches, put the paper. But it's, it's been approved, so we can't do nothing but now. So that's all I got.
Sorry?
Nothing.
Jack?
Uh, Board of Health tomorrow morning.
I didn't have it last week, so we're up to time with our auditor.
Okay. Um, reminder, Cockboard meeting at 5:00 tonight during this, you know?
Some of them are kinda hot.
What?
Some of the numbers kinda hot, I'm crazy.
There's a lot, I mean, uh, there's, yeah, 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 I was quite surprised and, um, I'm, I'm Mark from Sarvoa County. Their commission met this morning or last night and they did 6%, 6% press vote. And that's one of the most reasonable ones I've seen yet, so, yeah, they're, they're very high. Next week, we have a proof engineer letter report for private pricing on drain four. And the 28th, we swear in the new, uh, elected officials and the reelected officials at 5:00 on the 28th. Um, Aunt Gail's is going to be here to be able to do that. Um, I'm preparing for the next year's board meeting, January 3rd. And one of the things that you guys have to approve is the eminent domain commission. So I was wondering if you could look through this list quickly and see if there's anybody that you know is either passed away or that cannot be on that commission anymore, um, that you can try to replace and look for in the meeting next week. Department has, they're supposed to have their budgets in to me by Friday. I have gotten a few of them back already, so that's.
John's still alive, he just retired from the hospital ward.
Well.
We're not gonna let him get off of it.
Can they, can they be on it if they're retired from the?
He's not retired, he's retired off the hospital ward.
Oh, gotcha.
Yeah. He, he's still working as a realtor.
Okay, gotcha.
Yep. Well, I know, but he's still good.
And then.
Keith Shroudy, the banker, over there anymore. He went to work there, uh, out on the hill.
Will you pass your hand on?
As an underwriter.
Please. I'm gonna have to find somebody.
Send in your area, Casey?
Who?
The one you talked about.
Keith, he's a Laverne banker, so.
Okay.
He doesn't go, he's worked out of the office there, don't go.
Where'd you see the rates?
I sent you that at the, or, um, email, yeah.
They don't give you mail?
Um, it's been a little bit.
Wonder why it don't come in any other folder?
You do? We were at Weber's, so, um, we didn't find it.
Wasn't there one county that's like 30?
Was it Schenfelder, was it Schenfelder, was it, too?
33%, 35% in Morant County.
Or, yeah.
Supervisors and then whatever the second one was, sheriff.
Sheriff, supervisors, they don't deserve anything.
35% and then.
They're overpaid and underworked.
What was the five? Oh, no, that one's not bad. 25% for the sheriff in Worth County. 25% for the sheriff in Ringo County. They're all high percentages.
Couldn't look.
Yeah.
Oh.
What?
He lived down there, down, my house is out from my sister and brother, I don't get it.
So I have put the packet together for tonight's county board meeting, so. That, um, lawyer sent me, so I printed those out and I should be ready for that.
She's from Black County, ain't she?
Must just be a snowbird.
Do you saw what they did?
20%.
This is Keith who built that new house, right?
Thank you, Dave.
They had itself out, right?
Huh.
Can't use, married, uh, rich. Oh, well, that'd be very good.
So, and then that's away.
Four.
Oh, except for, um, I was gonna pass the code out, I think I, you guys had asked about, um, meeting mileage, paying, um, and the code was set, but.
We can be paid mileage, kind of, for, I mean, it's a code saying, and I knew that.
And I asked God about it.
Yeah, I knew that. We went through this.
You can't change it?
We can't change state code.
Does all legislative officials or?
No, just supervisors.
Supervisors.
Yeah.
The reason for that originally, I went through this once before, was there are supervisors, they're supposed to be taking a road to Elgonah different and checking things as they come to the meeting. It was an old time law.
Olden day.
It was an age when, you know, people didn't drive so much, it was so that supervisors knew what conditions of the road were in the country. That's what was explained to me at one time, once they changed, the original intent of the law. That's what was told to me. It makes sense. Anything else to come before the good of Cassoot County? Hearing now, I have a motion adjourned. I have a motion by Clapp, seconded by Casey. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Votes. We're adjourned.
Hey, Tammy, you give us a spot?
Um, yes.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Very welcome, Mary.